She's very stealthy.
Stealthy.
Well, you missed the social hour. Oh, no.
We don't celebrate. It's great. It is nice.
I tried, I tried something different this year. I turned to my wife and said, "What do you do for me for Valentine's?"
Nice. Not sure that's a good plan.
We'll see what happens. It doesn't mean I haven't done anything.
I'll find out.
You'll plan on the work.
Valentine's Day.
Respect should be there. But there's a 25th Valentine's. My wife's in the middle of it. Minus eleven, which she likes. That's not the window off of that mission.
Yeah, my 25-year-old son.
Just let me know. Let's see if it works then. They're going to report to me any minute. We won't be live during the meeting.
Come on, I even dressed up. What a disappointment.
So, I'd like to welcome everyone out to the Joint Planning Commission and City Council Meeting on January 30th, 2019. Just to start off with, we're going to call the meeting to order and jump into the administrative items, starting with item 3.1, which is approval of the August 30th, 2018 Joint Planning Commission City Council Meeting Minutes.
Looks good, bro.
All on paper?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. And then, the next item is moving on to item 3.2, which is a discussion of objectives, values, vision, and process for new Hermon City, the general plan with the project consultant, CRSA Architects. And I'm going to turn the time over to Michael to start with.
Yes, and I'll just introduce our, um, who we have as we're here tonight. We're so excited to begin this project with all of you, of course, greater residents of Hermon. I think this is a perfect time to begin this project. As we all know, there are a number of other master planners, general plan-related projects that we are undertaking right now. Parks Plan, Transportation Plan, we're studying a stormwater impact fee and, and the management plan. All of these plans, as they mature, will help inform the overall level of the city. In doing a general plan, there are various methods, there's different approaches that we can take. And then, talking with our planning staff and our consultant, Susie Becker with, uh, excuse me. Susie Beckerman with CRSA Architects and Benj Becker with Zions, I think most of us are familiar with. We, uh, on one extreme, we can really focus on the big ideas. We can think about, um, we can think long-term and think about the projects that this community can, um, wrap its arms around and really get behind. And I think that's valuable. There's another approach where you really think about it more organically and you think about trying to get the plan as close to the people as possible. Sometimes these take the form of even small area plans or neighborhood plans. Um, in some larger cities, they'll even do block-level plans if necessary. I, I think it would be interesting, and we're going to see how this matures, is to bring the best of both worlds. Coming to the city, I've been here now a year, it's, it's well-understood that there are great concerns that we have some very local and active residents in our city. And that's exciting. Everywhere at work, I have always appreciated public input, regardless of point of view, or whether it's contentious, or supportive, or disagreeable, or enthusiastic, I find that that participation is always informative and helpful. Much rather engage than try to do our work in isolation. So we, we're going to see how well we do with this idea. Maybe we'll find as we're going through this general plan that maybe one approach works better than, than another. But there's certainly value in trying to do the big things. In fact, I think this city, you've done that. You've done big ideas and, and been successful. Our stadium, it's huge. You know, that is so unique, especially for a city of our size and location, our age, such a young city. And, and, and the negotiating for future college campuses in, in, in our community. So many things, all the development agreements that we've negotiated. Those are not easy things to do. A lot of cities would shy away from them. But this city has taken them on. They did the big ideas. And that, that's part of our strength as a community. Now, in thinking about taking off our general plan, um, I asked Susie, I said, "What should we call this meeting?" And I'm the one who came up with the, with the language. She says, "Let's just call it a strategy meeting." But that's so much easier to say, and that's what we're really trying to do, start our strategy. But I had a vision, or it didn't just come to my mind, and I'm going to bring this up. We're going to watch just a short five-minute video clip, and I'm assuming some of you here might be familiar with this. Now, unlike the, the text on the screen, we will be aiming, we're not going to just ready-fire, we're going to ready-aim-fire, but that's not what this is all about. So we're going to just watch this, it's a little four minutes long, and then I'm going to explain. Let's see, sound. Volume? Is that saying, that says me?
Yep. Looks like it sounds off on this computer.
Shouldn't be. Oh, it's true. You're right. You're right. It's all of us.
Are you ready?
Are you ready?
Must be quite a show, man.
Let's sing in the house.
I wondered if you might do something for me. That's the letters here. Personal things.
Certainly.
Awesome. If I should fall. Remember what you see here. You better relieve, report to the rarest stretch of barracks. Do it now!
You go on, we'll be back ready.
If this man should fall, who will lift the flag and carry on?
I will.
I'll see you in the fort, Thomas. Fix! Fix!
Wait, wait, there's more. It's called Glory. It's a true story about the Massachusetts 54th Regiment. An all-black or colored regiment, they served for about almost two and a half years during the Civil War, obviously, of the North. And in this, this assault, over half of the regiment was either killed, wounded, or captured in the fort. The, um, this scene of the soldier who is carrying the flag and Colonel Shaw who asks, "If this man should fall, who will carry the flag, who will lift the flag?" Went online to, to find out, says, "When the flag bearer fell," this is the truth, "another black soldier Sergeant William Harby Carney wrapped the flag and carried it all the way to the bulwark support wagon. He remained there under enemy fire until the 54th was forced to retreat. Sergeant Carney struggled back to the Union lines with the flag, receiving four wounds from which he recovered. Carney became the first black recipient of the Medal of Honor." It's the image of, of who will carry the flag. This general plan should become something when we are done, that we will fight for, that we will, in our own roles, will, will defend. If we haven't created a general plan that we believe in, that we're willing to fight for, I, I think we failed. I think we really need to have a plan that is effective, represents the vision, the values, and goals of this community, like the flag, however it represents the United States. But that's my goal, that's my objective. I'm sure each of you have your own ideas, and that's what we really want to start getting on the table, letting our consultant hear from you, and really engaging the public in this exciting process. So, I'll turn the time over to Susie, and then we've got to connect your, your laptop. So again, I did see Chopin's, how many have seen that though, Glory? Just a few. It is so worth seeing. Highly, highly recommended. Fantastic to go.
Sir. And you know, there's a genuine energy. I can't get a single one. Well, there's two.
Oh, I see you wanted to send the mouse too. I see a pile.
What pile? It's on a pergola here.
Tim, can you edit this part out of the, out of the recording?
We're experiencing some technical difficulties. Please try and give a great chance.
Does anyone want to perform anything, seeing, kind of?
I will offer you a shirt.
Is that voluntary or is that fair?
I can clear, I can clear a room really fast, okay? Despite talents. Yeah, she probably knows what she's about to learn. What do you mean? Yeah, yeah, like, my dad is only ten, and so, most of his, yeah, yeah, they all live there, but I'm trying to think. Uh-huh, like if you turn to, turn, like, if the gas station go on the road up to the dam, right? So both of, two of them will go up that way.
Yeah, you're there five minutes from the archery.
Yes. Yep, it's right there.
On the other side.
There are a few other kids living there. Yeah, it's nice, it's just, I, I don't know. You know, I spend all the weekends going up there, so it's like, I like it there too. It's good. Sorry, you're still thinking about getting something, something up there.
Maybe, yeah, we'll see. What's for a kid, you're not quite comfortable buying things. You always sit there no matter what. Should we do it, should we not do it? But not, not just end your life.
It's hard to take leaps sometimes.
I know, but, but, yeah, I did.
I know, my oldest son, he wants to get a place out by Tabby really bad, well, if I, kind of, by Hannah, up by, you know, kind of towards the Dubruck up that way.
It's pretty good.
It's so awesome. The fishing is so good in the, in the North Fork right there. Fishing is excellent there. Yeah, yeah. So, you can actually, the fastest way is to go over Wolf Creek. In the winter, sometimes I'll close it, but it's all cave now, right? Yes, it's nice, like, when they close. Nice. So my daughter's grandparents live up the North Fork, and so, we spend, obviously, a lot of time up there, but it's beautiful. The fishing is. I figured that, that was coming, for sure. Are they still discussing it tomorrow too, yeah?
Yeah.
Thirty-four.
Hello, everybody, thank you, um, for having us today. Michael introduced us, but, yeah, I'm Susie Becker, and I have been with CRSA for seventeen years, planning consultants. Have worked all over the valley and interact west in, in the last two to three years. Have worked on general plans with Murray City, Taylorsville, Eagle Mountain, and Providence. So, a range of community types, uh, from a, a smaller suburban community of by living to, you know, some of those inner-city suburbs that are, are mostly built up and are ready to infill and refinalize. And then, Eagle Mountain, which similar to you, is one of those newer growth communities that has some, some growth patterns established, but is still looking to, to figure out how to define themselves in the future. So, one of the things that started off with this project, uh, meeting with Michael and Bryn back in November, December, was, uh, the directive to try to condense the schedule so that we could get a draft and ready for review by the end of 2019. Uh, so I just wanted to show the schedule, because I knew some of them was in our proposal, and just to give you a, a sense of where we are and what the different phases are to getting to a draft plan, um, right now, probably in November. And once we get to that draft plan that goes in front of the Planning Commission, from there, you know, the schedule's a little bit harder to determine just because it depends on that public hearing and that review process. Uh, but this is what we're intending, is that we'll have that draft, um, recommended plan ready by the, the end of November. Uh, we're starting out here, this is essentially a combination of the, the city workshop and the communication briefing meeting. Uh, just a kickoff meeting where we want to do some big idea visioning, some strategizing about what Hermon feels like it is as a city, as Mike talked about, the, the structure of the plan, and then taking some of that information along with data and findings that both Benj and I are coming up with, so that when we meet with our technical advisory committee, uh, first part of next month, that we have some information to take to that committee. Our goal at that group is to make sure that each time we meet with them, there's a specific purpose and the materials that we're reviewing so that we feel that's going to keep the, the process moving and making sure that we stay on task. Uh, so, the next thing that I wanted to do is talk about the structure of the plan. And because we're sort of in school mode, I'd be as smooth as it was in my mind. So, this is just a, a diagram, talking about the general plan in relation to, um, the other things that the city, the planning department, and the council and planning commission use for making decisions related to land use and development, but really the shape of the city as a whole. Uh, so, the general plan up there at the top, as it's named, it's very general in nature. It's not supposed to identify a particular zoning for a particular parcel, uh, but it's supposed to give that general framework. It's long-term in nature, so we're looking not just one year, but five to ten years into the future, and maybe even longer depending on what some of the big ideas are that come out of this process. In the middle, that's where you get to those master development plans. You guys are very familiar with the master development process, uh, but also small area plans and specific plans. Michael mentioned this in this introduction, and based on our discussions, we feel like this is an implementation item that will come out of the final structure of the general plan document. Once we know some general vision and framework information about the city as a whole, uh, some of these sub areas, one of those action items or implementation items in the general plan will be to take a closer look at those, do a small area plan that gives a little bit of a deeper dive into the details about what makes that area tick. Uh, from there is where you get down to the city codes and the zoning ordinances. What is the regulatory language that influence, influence the vision, the big ideas, and makes it happen, it's on the ground? So this is the information that Michael, Bryn, and their staff will use on a day-to-day basis to help them make decisions. As a planning commission and city council, these are the things that you're going to make decisions. And one of those ideals is to have within those regulatory frameworks a reference to your general plan, saying, like, what, you know, what does the general plan say? Uh, are we following the recommendations of that plan? We want these things to work together and not just be the general plan as an exercise that you went through, you checked out the box. You want all of these things to be living, working documents, and so that's our goal in this process, is to make sure that we have all of these things, um, in place, ready for you to use. So this is just a, a diagram, sort of describing what you feel like the structure of the general plan document is going to be when we end. The general plan as a whole, it's going to cover both a citywide vision and framework, so we're going to do some scale jumping in discussions, both today and throughout the process. Um, thinking about what, as a city, does Hermon want to be? Uh, when we were talking earlier, uh, yesterday with Michael and Bryn, talking about how Hermon feels, a very new, young city, and just eager to, you know, bring development in, be very nimble and flexible, not wanting to pass up any opportunities. So that was, you know, in your youth, you were very, um, you know, flexible and nimble. As you got into your teenage years, you started growing really quickly, really fast, and so, a lot happened, and now we feel like the city as a whole has reached that maturity, um, where you're ready to sit down and figure out, okay, you know, we've been through those phases, what do we want to be when we grow up? So, at this stage in the process, if you're going to college, you're going to have a little bit of a discussion, do some educations and dialogue, and really figure out, when I grow up, what do I want to be? And how can the city take control and be, be that visionary, be that master development of your city as a whole? So that when people come to you, you can say, "That's a great idea, it fits in our framework, and you've got the tools and the guiding language to help us make a decision regarding your development on whether or not it supports our vision." So, um, what we intend is that that citywide vision framework is going to help those decisions, but within those, the smaller neighborhood visions and frameworks, knowing that as a whole, Hermon is not the same. In every part of the city, there's different characteristics, uh, there's different types of people and residences and different businesses and catalysts in each of the different parts of Hermon. So we want to try to capture what those unique characteristics are for these different sub areas and come up with a vision and framework for each of those sub areas. And then, as we saw on the previous slide, probably a next step then would be for the city to pursue a more detailed, um, deep dive, small area plan for each of those neighborhood areas that we identified during the general plan process. Uh, so when I talk about the, the scale jumping, one of the things that we'll do today is just to start off with, what defines those neighborhood areas? It's a little bit trickier in some of the, the suburbs where you don't have communities that evolved as naturally as, you know, downtown Salt Lake, you've got your Sherwood House neighborhood, you've got the avenues, you've got the re-park. You've got areas that are fairly well-established and identify themselves based on their history and context. Uh, what we want to do today is just to start to, you know, initiate a conversation about what some core areas might be for defining neighborhoods. It could be the Salt Lake community, college campus, could be the Traxx area, has sort of the old town Hermon and the original Hider settlement, but just generating some ideas of what you think these future neighborhood areas could be. They don't need to be equal in geographic size or population size, but we want to make sure that if we call something a neighborhood, there's a reason we're defining it as a neighborhood in the general plan structure. Uh, so we'll get to that, but first, uh, from the other side of the scale jumping part, so we have these neighborhoods that define your city, uh, but the city as a whole is not an island. Uh, you're part of the broader region, and what happens in that region influences what happens in Hermon. So, Benj Becker, the Science Bank Public Finance, put together a few slides just to give you, you know, that overview of what's happening in the region and its impact on what's going to likely happen in Hermon, uh, just what your opportunities are and what we look forward, how we can capture some of the information that we know about regional, um, sort of state and how that impacts Hermon. So, I'm going to have Benj go ahead and come up, unless there's any questions that you have for me. And sorry, it's a little awkward scrolling. And sorry, it's a little awkward scrolling.
Nobody asked, but it makes it more dramatic, I guess. So, yeah, Susie said, part of the goal in tonight, I think you're looking at the vision and the strategy that you hope for Harriman in the future. And as Mr. Malloy said, or, you know, kind of related, what's the flag that you're going to carry? Or what's the legacy you're going to take to the next generation? And understanding that is really knowing what are the regional influences. And I'm sure in Harriman, you hear quite often about things like housing, housing affordability. I won't say the D-word, that I know is not to be said in Harriman, that rhymes with smesity, but it starts with a D. Retail, employment, you hear about a lot of these regional influences. So, I just want to talk about them. We've pulled some data, and everyone can pull data, but really the fun part is what is the story that the data tells? So, the first one, and I'm just going to, we'll just go off of, hopefully off of Ben here, is household growth for the Salt Lake County area, Tooele County, Davis, and Mootai County. And you can look from the Gardner Institute, which you probably all know is that's the main policy sort of thing tank for the U, and that's what the state uses for their population projections. And if you look at household growth, over the next forty years it's projected, you can get an idea of how many households Salt Lake County is supposed to add. And then, what's interesting to me is to take that and say, well, if each of those homes are built on fifteen thousand square foot lots, or ten thousand square foot lots, or five thousand, or, here we go, or fifteen hundred square foot lots, how much land does that require? And where do we need to start making planning efforts as cities in order to accommodate, if we want thirty acre lots or half acre lots? So, this is a lot, maybe this is supposed to come in PowerPoint sections, but you can, whatever. So, if you see here real quick, just look, the gray boxes there for Salt Lake County, which is there in the middle. If you have fifteen thousand square foot lots, you would need two thousand acres per year to accommodate all of the incoming population. Does that make sense? So, that only covers the household size, it doesn't, or excuse me, the lots. It does not include all the roads and the parks that you would need to accommodate that. If you look at the blue there, now, Wasatch Run, we call it the multi-county district. That's those five that make up sort of the economic development district. And then, if you look at it from the state of Utah, you can see we would need eight thousand, eighty-five hundred acres a year if we developed all of our lots, all of our incoming households at fifteen thousand square foot lots. Now, if you look at it just for Harriman, Harriman adds five hundred residences a year. And I recognize that's small compared to, I think last year you were sixteen hundred, is that right? A thousand apartments, homes, and five or six hundred single-family homes? But anyways, going down the road, you're not always going to be able to add sixteen hundred homes. So, if you have five hundred residences a year, again, not including the roads or parks that are associated with that development, you'd need a hundred and seventy-two acres and fifteen thousand square foot lots. This again is not a promotion for any sort of density. This is essentially just for you to wrap your arms around what it is that we need to plan for in the future in Harriman. The population certainly continues to keep coming. This is another statistic that I find intriguing. We hear all the time about affordability. You probably hear it from neighbors and residents. Affordability in Harriman, and this looks at it from countywide region here. This is the ratio of the median housing value to median incomes. So, if you had a four hundred thousand dollar median home price, and a hundred thousand dollar median income, you have a ratio of four point oh. Obviously, the higher the ratio, the more the concern that is about affordability. This topic gets brought up all the time in Salt Lake, in Salt Lake County. And you can see that we have had, obviously, increases in that ratio since two thousand. Interestingly enough, if you were to take this in two thousand twelve, those numbers in two thousand twelve would be below where they were in two thousand, because we were still right in this direction. So, that's why I recommend looking at it over maybe a twenty-year period, or eighteen, nineteen years now. As you can see, Salt Lake County as well, it is above the state. Tooele County is significantly different than other counties. And that is one, that is one item of the discussion there. But really what's important, if you are looking at, are we competitive with other markets? How can we shop this to employers who are in competitive markets? And say, we want you to come to Utah, because, look, if you go to Portland, your employees, if they're making a hundred thousand dollars in Utah, or they're making a hundred thousand dollars in Portland, obviously, what they can buy is significantly different. So, then that company has to make a very quantitative, measurable decision to say, well, we're going to pay our employees twenty-five percent more in Portland in order to be able to afford a home or to make up that affordability gap. Well, if that's the case, what is twenty-five percent greater in Portland? What is the benefit that they're getting? And this becomes very quantifiable. So, I've worked chasing jobs in Utah, making comparisons to these other markets. And you can see that Utah is still significantly superior in terms of affordability to Portland, Phoenix, Denver, Las Vegas. And then, if you're completely have no clue what you're doing in your life, you live in San Francisco, which is where I moved from five years ago, for this, one of this very many reasons. And they're trying to charge nine hundred dollars for my daughter's preschool, and my dad's home. I didn't even make nine hundred dollars. So, anyways, this is interesting. Harriman, just from the numbers that we quickly ran, was at three point six six. So, you can see they're below Salt Lake County, but kind of right there in that range. This was another, you know, data set that's interesting to me. We all hear about employee growth. It's supposed to happen over the next forty years. And in that first column, you see the number of new jobs per year. This is projected by the Gardner Institute, new jobs per year for these different areas. And including Utah County there, just because it obviously has an influence on Harriman. And then, if yours, if you take and you divide out all of those jobs, the state offices, they show that they think we're going to X number of jobs in technology and agriculture. And certainly it's subjective, but these numbers are meant to provide some vision going forward. Then needed parking square feet per year. So, if you take the average square feet per parking space and apply it to those jobs, you can see, for example, there in the middle of Salt Lake County, you'd need almost four million square feet of parking per year. That's ninety acres per year of parking. And over the forty-year projection period, it's thirty-six hundred acres. If you're looking at just those five county area, the Wasatch Run, you know, county area, five thousand acres of parking, well, what does that, what does that mean? Five thousand acres is eight square miles. If you throw in Utah County, it's thirteen square miles. If you know any of these cities, I mean, that's, eight square miles is bigger than the size of Seneca. It's bigger than Roy. If you're looking at thirteen square miles, you're, you know, you just paved over Riverton. And the point of this exercise here is to say, or this data, the story that this tells to me is that we, when we look forward in the future and we say, we are going to have all these jobs and population, usually the conversation starts at I-15, and how we can reduce the congestion in mountainous quarter, or these east-west quarters. But there's also consideration of, are we going to pave the whole valley to provide this parking? Or are our land use plans, our general plan's going to get a little bit smarter about putting employment next to transit or funding infrastructure, because we realize the alternative cost is significant. It is paved parking. Now, this will change as things like ride-sharing occur, or when people work from home. But you can see the picture. Now, Harriman, I don't know your new jobs per year. This was merely a guess based on the population you have. But I also recognize you have a very high median household size compared to other cities. But you can see that you would need two hundred and fifty-six acres of parking if it was eight hundred jobs a year. I can imagine that you want a plan that you map out two hundred and fifty-six acres over the next forty years and say that those are going to be parking, right? So, whether it's becoming, you know, a little bit smarter about where is the parking if you need to be, you know, by transit, things like that. Another hot topic we hear about a lot, a lot, is retail. This is just intriguing to me, that everybody says, why can't we get a Costco in our city? Or why can't we have such-and-such store? And there is an immediate difference, you can see the difference, the impact to a city. This is purely just the sales tax percentage that the city is getting from these retails. So, you can see, if you have a ShopCo and a Costco, they take up almost the same amount of parking. I mean, Costco is a little more. But look at what they do directly to the city. Those are direct revenues to the city. This is the average for all A-Top stores for these type of retails. Look at the difference they have a Costco over a ShopCo. I mean, just be thankful that you don't have a city full of ShopCos. You can see that people, just even understanding the small difference between a Wendy's and a Burger King, or an Outback Steakhouse compared to, you know, something else that might be of similar size. And this is important for people to, for developers to understand. We are seeing now that when people are creating community redevelopment areas, or these CRAs, these RDAs, which you've heard the term, they are now starting to include language to say, we'll provide incentives to this developer for retail, only if that retailer has average sales of more than five hundred square feet per year. And that way, they don't end up with KFC's and Taco Bell's. They end up, if the market supports it, with something more like a Black River Dining or an Outback Steakhouse in order to get those incentives. So, kind of interesting. And then here, you can just see the impact of it on, oh, wrong way, on a price per square foot. Costco, obviously, the leader there. Sales tax generate per square foot, five twenty-five. And then, you can see Apple in the corner, Apple's twenty-seven fifteen a square foot. There's nobody even close. Tiffany's is pretty high up there. But Apple generates about, you saw that previous slide, Costco's a thousand dollars a square foot in sales. Apple's about five thousand, five hundred dollars a square foot in sales. So, that's a lot of high bills stacked up here. But anyways, I think it's just important, is you're considering the future of your town. What type of retailers you want, and what does that mean to you as a city? Is it, what are the fiscal impacts of that? Getting a Costco or a better, you know, a better type restaurant, what does that mean in terms of city revenues? Is that allowing to provide for more parks and more police officers, whatever that might mean? And that's, those are just some of the hot button issues that we hear about that we'd like for you to, you know, think about as you're visioning for Harriman, and what decisions you want to make going forward. So, any questions on any of that data?
When are we getting to Apple Store?
Exactly.
Apple stores at four.
Like car dealerships, do you have any data on car dealerships' impact? And then also, just wondering if you looked up or have looked at when the companies come out for the impacts they have. Because obviously, they don't bring tax dollars so much, but the impact they have with people coming out for work and the impact that has on the community around it.
Sure. Yeah, we do those studies all the time about the type of jobs that are coming in, what's the likelihood of those, those jobs, people staying in the community? What's the impact of an employee per community in terms of what they typically buy, you know, for, and all sorts of different retail categories? Auto dealerships are fantastic for sales tax revenue. They generate a significant amount. They differ significantly from one to the next, obviously dependent on amount of size. But that's certainly data that we can, we'd love to get here. I don't have it right here with me, that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, what I'd like to do next is to jump scales back to the neighborhood level. And we've got an easel pad over here to describe. And so, what I'd like to do is start thinking about those neighborhoods and just generating some ideas about what are some key areas or entities that you think would define a neighborhood around it in Harriman, either right now or in the future, based on what you know is coming down the line? So, I've mentioned Salt Lake Community College, potential future track station, the core pioneer settlement area of Harriman. But you guys are the experts, you live here, and I want to hear your ideas. And this is also, it translates directly to what Michael said about taking this out to the general public and hearing what the people from these different neighborhoods identify as key attributes and vision for their neighborhood. So, just start throwing out some ideas and...
So, at least some of the areas that I think about as I look at Harriman. And granted, some of it is outside, more in the county still, but I think we'll, we need to look at as the general plan progresses is... I mean, you men mentioned Salt Lake Community College. I think more of, we also, Salt Lake one, you mentioned up in that area, more of a sports arena-type area, bringing in outside people from other parts, which goes up pretty much mountain view to almost where Port of Rockwell is. That's starting to become a light industrial-type area with DBATs and some of the other entities there. More of a sporting type, but I guess you would say more of bringing people here in a sporting capacity. I sort of think of that corridor as sort of falling in that area right now. The other area, I think, is when you go into Yellow Fork or Butterfield, it tends to be more of the outdoor hiking, horseback riding, mountain biking, sort of, I mean, this beautiful area in both Yellow Fork and Butterfields. The other area that I look at is in between 118 and Bacchus Highway. And at least in my mind, with sort of some of the thoughts or plans, it's where it migrates to more of the light industry or different types of sort of work areas. And that's sort of at least three areas that I think of.
I think another one is Town Center. Might be a smaller one, but maybe Black Ridge Reservoir type neighborhood.
This is more holistically, but I think even in Harriman, it's somewhat of an education center. If you think about the community college coming here, even with an extension of University of Utah here, you know, there's been all kinds of things floating around about another college coming here. And RSL is an education center, really. Those soccer players come here to be educated on playing soccer. And DBAT people go there to be educated on, you know, I mean, just a learning environment is really something that is part of our culture, I think, just promoting that learning in different aspects, whether it be sports or education, we're promoting, you know, advancement in learning. But that's more holistic.
I think with that, we have the Harriman Arts Council as well, that has become more and more well-known over the last couple of years, with people coming into the city to see some of the things they do. So, if you're sticking with education, there's a lot of areas where we can consider more within our city or just keep rolling off of what we have.
Curious. I live in a master planned community in my, in my city. And the people who live in my neighborhood know it by the name of this, it's called Overlake. So, people always refer to themselves as living in Overlake. Those of you who live here in Harriman, I mean, do you think of your own neighborhood as something that's defined or has a name? I mean, how do you think of your own?
I think there is some. There's some Rose Creek and the early phases of Rose Crest, I think, where all the open space is.
The Cove.
The Cove. Cove, Copper Creek, where those big chunks of...
And that's pretty commonplace?
Old here, Old Town.
Old Town.
Old Town.
Old Town or historic.
Or Rose Basin.
Which, with that being said, there's some areas that have to be preserved for that to remain that way. Because there's two or three different buildings and other locations that could potentially disappear over time if we don't protect them.
Sure.
Yeah, I know, I know people refer to themselves as those four or five.
I live in the Cove, or I live in the, I live in Rose Creek.
Rose Creek, Cove Creek, like those are some of the other ones. Some of those recent developments, I don't hear people referring, I mean, unless it's Town Center. I don't really hear many.
Anthem.
Anthem. Yeah. And some of that is because, like, some of the projects that Doug Young has done, or maybe all of them, he's got these monument entries that have a name on it, right? Generally, it's good to try and preserve that and enhance that. It creates an identity, a sense of place.
My first experience with Anthem was like, so a different city? That was my impression of...
The Anthem was not in here.
Yeah.
Oh, a different city altogether.
I was like, is it a different city than here?
Yeah. My neighborhood sometimes is thought that way, too.
Yeah, I think, I think that's some of that. I have a bunch of people that I know that help my RSL, and they refer to themselves as, I live by the RSL.
Yeah.
Other by the stadium or RSL.
Exactly, yeah, that's how I've noticed that it's starting to become.
Juniper Crest, same way, right?
Juniper Point.
Juniper Point.
Juniper.
Juniper Point.
It's, that's right up there, right?
That's the one that has the, if it's more of a, it's a little more restricted community than that either.
Yeah, it's an enjoy.
And so I think that pulls it in a little bit. I don't know if people like up around there, the subdivisions up around, I think they do still call themselves Rose Crest.
Rose Crest, yeah.
And there's not really anything as of now that really defines shopping areas in the city. I mean, like the district, we don't have anything.
Smith's, we're talking about Smith's.
There's not really a sit-down restaurant, even Cafarillo can borderline be called fast food just because of what it is. But there's not really any sit-down areas, which, I mean, I don't know about most of you guys, but if I go out on a date with my wife, I don't stay in the city to eat. And so...
Taking your taxpayer money out of here?
Taking the money out. And it's not because, you know, honestly, we just have any sit-down areas within the city.
Or Indian Restaurant.
I'll eat.
Gura's is very good.
Yeah, I've been listening to your topics.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my book out too.
I give everyone directions based off of Smith's.
Yeah, Smith's is the center of...
But that is, I mean, that is kind of a shopping community, everybody knows where all the stuff that you refer to, everyone refers to is Smith's.
Go to Smith's and turn right.
On how to get to directions, I know that sounds crazy, but I know everybody knows.
So for High Country, do most people say, I live in Harriman if they live in High Country?
No, they say High Country.
High Country.
That's High Country.
Yeah, it's very defined.
High Country.
Harriman is a swear word.
I mean, you do have, on the stuff that's outside Harriman, you have Rose Canyon, and they all, they don't refer to themselves as High Country, they refer to themselves as Rose Canyon.
Yeah, I mean, Butterfield Park is also well known in the city.
Yeah.
And I mean, when we have the little carnival every year and the rodeo in Enduro, and, I mean, it's, it's a lot of fun and it's well-known. It's almost a disservice that we ended up getting tucked in the back corner because it's not, I mean, it took me a while living here to realize it was there.
Do the school boundaries create much of a...
They're crazy.
They're changing so much.
They keep changing.
They change a lot.
They don't, I wouldn't say they do.
I'd say as the new high school comes online, that will become more, more prominent than it currently is, obviously, because there's one high school that services the whole community. But us will be split in half, you know, this fall. And I think that's when that will begin to come into play.
Yeah, really, most, a lot of the kids that'll go to Harriman High School will be from South Jordan.
Yes.
Yeah.
Majority, actually.
Yeah.
The school boundaries have actually kind of got totally outside.
Probably why you shouldn't name a high school.
They don't fit the cities.
It's probably why you shouldn't name a high school after a city, you should just name it something different.
Plus, I think, I actually think school districts are changing. Now that there's more charters, like charter schools, I actually think that the whole school dynamic of...
It's changed.
You know, like, when I went to Beadham High, that's, you said everybody went to that area. I don't think school districts, I mean, I know like seven schools, if you go down to fifteen houses on the street.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that with charter schools now, it kind of dissolved a lot of those boundaries. It still has it in some of the high school level, but middle school and elementary is just...
Yeah, I agree.
Free from.
How strong is the identity in Old Town?
It used to be really strong. We've had a lot move away in the last couple of years that they're all, they're all getting older and moving on in age, they're moving away.
Are the edges of Old Town kind of a blur?
We haven't official map yet.
I know we do, I'm just kind of wondering, when people cognitively think about their neighborhood...
They're becoming more and more blurred.
Yes.
Sure.
I don't know that there's, I actually think that's one thing that we've kind of missed is an opportunity to identify Old Town as Old Town instead of this area that doesn't have sidewalks. That, I mean, that's really what it is for, I imagine, for new people, that's what they refer to, I've never heard.
There's, there's been a lot of flag laws that have gone into Old Harriman, which sort of takes away that feel as well.
Yeah, I'd say the people that live in Old Town that are old town will refer to themselves as Old Town, the rest of the citizens won't. It's just a...
There's really about three streets, that's about what it is.
It would be beneficial to...
That's Old Town.
To kind of define neighborhood back there.
At the terrible lights.
And beautify it a little bit, I think that would be cool. I personally think that would be cool.
Brett, who lives in Old Town?
He's borderline.
Borderline.
Did you say that just Brett won?
I heard, and I don't consider you...
Yeah, I couldn't, see, my impression is, and I don't even...
Even my neighborhood's semi, I'm in Lafayette, and they semi include us in Old Town, but we're not really.
True Old, true Old Towners.
Washed that way.
Yeah, true, yeah.
But see, I mean, we have the, we have the gardens there, and that's definitely an Old Town Harriman. We have the, with the cabin and things like that. And then we have the old three-door house, I'll define it as that. And then there's the old grocery store, but that's farther up, that's shut down now, which is not...
Yeah, I wouldn't say it goes past sixty-four, and it's kind of a blend between about this, right, right where Mayor Freeman lived to around Brett's line. You can stretch it out a little bit to the cemetery, maybe.
We'll give Brett Old Harriman.
He gets my whole...
Brett gets old, but not Harriman, he's just old, that's where there was a pause.
People know where it's at, so it's easy to win.
Yeah, for Harriman, yeah, for sure.
So, but the thing is, is the city can establish that more so as the old Harriman. I mean, there's the Crane Sisters that are both like a hundred years old, literally. And their little, little house has been there forever, and they've lived in Harriman their entire life. And, I mean, there's, there's some neat little areas around there that could be preserved if the city chose to put a little emphasis on it.
And the two reasons why we're asking is I think Suzie is, again, generally, if we, if there is an inherent sense of place, most people don't want to see that corroded. They don't want to just suddenly kind of lose that unique quality of their neighborhood. So if we can do things to try and strengthen that rather than erode it, that's usually a desirable objective with the community. But second was what Suzie and our planning department has talked about is we want to try and have planning exercises in these more defined neighborhoods and try to engage people, you and your neighbors in these areas. So we kind of need to know where to go.
That's actually really focused.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, if they'd have some ideas we don't have.
Yeah, for sure.
Let's add Harriman Hills then, I guess that's where I'd go.
Other real space in these neighborhoods.
And we've talked with our, with the liaisons, you know, trying to use that, we mentioned that we'll try to incorporate their networking.
One of the strategies that we're going to use for outreach, just so that we can maximize the effort and like our time and the community's time, is that we'll be putting together, you know, what we call meeting in a box or some materials that will have all the information and the materials ready so that these community liaisons can go out into these different neighborhoods or the city staff can go along and sit down and have these smaller informal meetings with the neighborhood groups, either, you know, somebody's house or just at a community event or whatnot, throughout the process, so that it's just a different platform and opportunity for people to provide input about the areas that mean the most to them, which is where, where they live. People will have the opportunity to provide input throughout the process on that bigger citywide vision, but we want to make sure that we're listening at that neighborhood scale too. And so that's one of our strategies is to, you know, provide some materials so that when we're up doing other things, that there's, there's ways for residents in the city to be getting it throughout the process, so. Great, well, that gives probably twice as many neighborhoods as I have in my...
Yeah, and we'll obviously bounce these off of Brynn and Craig.
Brings the, for you, like, if something's a neighborhood or not, it has to... And then also just figure out what these boundaries are, because it might be, you know, some of these are, are very tiny, even if they have a, an identity, you know, it might be that a cluster of these together can become a new neighborhood that we, you know, and it might just be something to define for the purpose of the general plan or small area plan, but something that the city and the city staff can work with moving forward to do more of these detailed deep dive, you know, small area plans. So that's the framework that we want to come up with. And as we go through the process, this being the ideas and some of the work that we'll do here today, we'll try and replicate more to some of the areas that have been defined, so. Thank you. So the next item that I have on the agenda, and we can move on forward unless anybody needs a quick break, but the next activity was to start looking at, coming up with some identity characteristics and qualities and key indicators or metrics that might help Harriman measure whether or not you're achieving sort of the goals or ideas or vision for particular areas. So I had an image up that is sort of a reference point. So this is just a diagram from this group out of New York City called Project for Public Spaces. I don't know if anybody's heard of their work. They do a lot of place making exercises, they also do public market research, and it's a group that we're teamed with to do a public market feasibility study in Salt Lake City for the State Fair Park. So they'll be coming out here a few times, but I found this diagram and I thought it was a good reference point for the exercise that I want to do today with you, which is to look at some key attributes for the city. And then in that, that inner circle, then those are the four key areas or categories. The next circle are some of the more, what they call intangibles, but really it's qualitative factors that sometimes they're a little bit hard to measure. But there's still things that are very important to people, you know, whether it's being friendly or safe or clean or green. But these are things that help define both the city and neighborhoods. And so sort of given the scale jumping, we're moving back up to a citywide framework or vision at this point in the discussion. And then that outer circle, those are the things that are a little bit more quantitative in nature. Those are things that can generally be measured in some fashion. So what we'll come up with out of the exercise today is something that will result in sort of a comparable diagram for us to use as we start to outline some of the big issues or big ideas for the general plan from a citywide framework, so. I have four categories that I want us to talk about, some of these qualitative indicators as well as some quantitative metrics and measurements. The first one is thinking about the built environment and the urban form. The next is more image and identity that might be not necessarily, you know, what the neighborhood looks like, but what, you know, what as a whole is Harriman's identity? You know, what image do you want to project? Where are we now? What do you want it to be five years in the future, twenty years in the future? The third category is looking at the social and the cultural components of your city. What is your vision for that? And then the last one, what are your objectives and vision and goals for the fiscal and economic perspectives of the city? So I think I'm going to start off with fiscal and economic because we just had some great data and numbers that came from Venge. And so just thinking about the things that you want to achieve or hope to work towards, you know, what are some things that would help define Harriman from a fiscal and economic perspective? And then also thinking about what are some ways to measure whether or not you're meeting those goals and objectives?
So I think part of it's sustainability, I mean, our budget is heavy on one-time money right now. And so we have to replace that money because eventually the one-time money we've done will be built out. And so what are we doing in our general plan to make sure that money is replaced? Because all these lovely social things don't happen if we can't afford to pay for upkeep on parks or anything like that, right? So we have to develop economically so that we can have sustainability, so that we can continue to support ourselves when the one-time money goes away.
Sustainable, regenerative fiscal budget for the city.
I think based on the numbers that we saw previously, we need four Costcos.
Yes.
So that's a good measuring point.
And a couple of Apple Stores.
And two Apple Stores. Yeah, and maybe two Apple Stores, we'll do the two.
Do you have Twitter jobs?
Yeah, no, but to Sherri's, to Sherri's point, I think part of how we measure that is, is if we are planning for and creating the opportunity for people to stay within their own community for their jobs. Obviously, the sustainability part is, is one to generate the funds to help maintain the way of life and, you know, that we, that we all hold, you know, sacred out here. But the other is for people to have the option to not have to, to leave our community to, to do their work. So we've got to create some of those, those, or set aside, plan for some of those areas to be developed in, in ways that bring in, that create real jobs and bring real business to our community, because there's benefits on both sides of that.
Another thing I think we have to consider is our strategy when it comes to what type of commercial we want in here. And the reason why I say that is we've seen the trend, the big box stores are not doing as well as they used to, and a lot of them are going away.
Except Costco.
Except Costco, that's what's getting due, so.
On both those points, so there is a metric that we follow up that is the number of residents per job. So when you look at population growth in the job group, for example, Tuilla, which is known as a bedroom community and they're lacking in jobs, that resident growth is projected three times the rate of job growth. Where Salt Lake County, it's one point two, so almost for every resident you're adding, you're also adding jobs. Because you get so many people coming in to Salt Lake County, outside County. So that would be an easy metric to identify in Harriman and being tracked over time. Is it, do you want to be a community that is, you know, higher on that ratio as compared to other cities, you know, say, Rovetons, South Jordan, San Diego, Behigh, whatever you consider comparable? Or is it okay with the perception of being a little bit more of a bedroom community? And then the other one that you brought up about retail is that most established communities right now have about twenty-five square feet per, of retail space per person. And developers are saying, you know, it's just significantly too much now. We are seeing changing trends, more people obviously online, or smaller retail stores. And developers now are saying, we'd like to see a little bit closer to fifteen to twenty square feet per capita. And you think of that difference, if you go from fifteen or midpoint, or seventeen to twenty-five, that's taking a lot of supply out of work. So you have a lot of these centers that made sense ten, fifteen years ago that no longer make sense. So maybe figuring out what's the profit ratio for Harriman going forward? What's the right amount of retail that we want to have for capital? Those are the things that need to be very trackable benchmarks.
See, I, I think that we should focus more on bedroom community. I know that the goal is to get more businesses, and I know the goal is to get more job growth here. But I, I just, we've got to be a little realistic, we're in the corner of a valley and everyone that I know are looking at, most of you all commute to work. So I, I think it's a great idea, but I think we have to be a little realistic with what we are.
Along Mountain View Corridor, especially towards the south, it starts as it, as it converges on the other portions, it converges on Silicon Slopes really.
We really have to plan effectively along Mountain View Corridor as we get out farther. I'm, I'm agreeing with Adam that we really have to consider it a bedroom community as we get away from it.
Especially in the corners.
And I think initially, some of the challenges we've had is we focused on going after the, the big boxes. So big boxes brought density, which made us go density, and it just kept going and going. And that's where, I actually think that's where it derailed, Harriman derailed a little bit from what the norm was. And why we have a thousand, what was it, a thousand, a thousand multifamily homes and only five hundred residential. I think we actually tripped a little bit in trying to get the commercial, so we built the base for that commercial. And that's where I personally think it would be better to focus in certain areas and really go after, that is, our goal is that part is a bedroom community. By Mountain View, I completely agree, that's where we should be high density.
Just ask maybe a clarifying question. I know that you're concerned about having too much zoning for commercial... I know that you're concerned about having too much zoning for commercial, just trying to be realistic.
Yep.
That, you know, maybe we are largely a bedroom community. That's, that's what we are now, maybe that's our future.
I think.
But if we could, if, if we were able to structure our planning and our economic development tools so that we could be successful at bringing commercial development, do you think that this community would want that? If we could be successful?
I, I think we have to, I think that opens a whole can of stuff because we don't have the infrastructure to handle that in our area. I mean, when we look at, we looked at the potential of the Bonneville study. And they're pretty much saying, yeah, they're proposing three times what our infrastructure can handle with our roads. And, 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 I mean, before you answer that, it's like, we have to answer, is our infrastructure solution first? And that's where I look at it because it's like, right now, it, it's a bedroom community and it can only be a bedroom community because there's no infrastructure to handle it.
Good point. So we've got to make sure that we're connecting our land use plan with the infrastructure.
Well, you know, for example, Chris said it earlier, is you have Butterfield Park that draws a lot, that does draw a lot of people. But it's not that easy, it's not that easy to get in and out.
Living here, living here.
And, you know, road wise, you still have Rose Canyon Road that's a three-way odd inter, I mean, there's a lot of odd things there that we kind of, you know, looks okay. If we're really trying to take advantage and develop Rose Canyon over time, it needs to be easy for people from outside of the community to come in. And I've, I've talked to a lot, I work with Lehigh City a lot, and they tell me, a lot of the mountain bikers want to come to Harriman to go mountain biking because it's not really that known. And it's starting to build similar to what Drapers has done. But I think if we don't really help boost it, it will just kind of be just an extra little function. Some people like it, some people don't. With the economic development, the thing that keeps coming to my mind is like, it, it's these almost novelty stores. It's, I remember when I went to the City and Towns meeting and went to one of the little seminar things. And it had this, this little strip mall with 10 different little shops in it. And then it showed these big box stores and they compared it to what's the tax revenue for both? And the little strip mall was outpacing the box store.
Yeah, I've seen this.
And, and the thing is, is the little, smaller commercial entities have more of appeal to a community like this right now. Like everything around this, that ice skating ribbon. Like if, I, I wouldn't want larger restaurants necessarily around that if we, if we could not have that. It, it's more of these smaller shops and this small town still almost. I'm not saying we don't put a restaurant in there if it comes, but it, it's, it's where are we going with this? And I mean, we saw what happened with Knott's right here. It wasn't successful. And I'm not saying it was, there's multiple reasons, but still.
I think one of our advantages is, yes, we're over zoned commercial, but we're not overbuilt per se. Like, we're seeing a lot of contraction in the retail strip centers and they're needing to redevelop, you know, into something else. We don't have that problem. Venge is part of your study and analysis, and I'm assuming you'll also give us some advice. You might be able to recommend what you think is viable from an economic development, some of you?
I think, just that going forward, you have to be careful that if you are going to continue with large lots, they ultimately, cities don't sustain themselves, bedroom communities don't sustain themselves on large lots. And there becomes a point where those, you're, you're paying your cost of services to support those lots is much greater. So that's why you need that commercial tax base. So you've made some, Harriman's made some really smart choices in the past in the amount of commercial. And I recognize now that in fact, well, why are we eating those big boxes? Well, 10 years ago, and that's, that's what everybody, nobody could really look forward and see this, right? But you, you need, they, some of those big boxes have a lot more economic resiliency than the mom and pop stores. So when you see those recessionary times and they go out of business, you need that solid commercial base to help support that income that you're getting off of your residential property taxes. Because that's pretty minimal. And as you know, we've got the tax residential property to 55%. And it's a pretty minimal portion, whereas the sales tax and property tax comes from commercial and from offices is significantly more. So you need to have obviously a great mix there. It is, it's, it's pretty impossible to have a pure 30 per lot city, and we don't have that.
Yeah, we don't have that.
We're not even close to that.
But, but I mean, I reckon that that's what, you know, residents are constantly wanting. There is a cost.
That's River Tinsel minus River.
It's not sustainable.
But, but the problem is, the problem is, is it, that's done anyway. We have 45% of our cities is multifamily. So it's not, it's a mute point.
Yeah, we're four times most other cities right now.
Yeah. So, so, so we could continue to have 30 per lots and still maintain some balance.
And that, and that's what I think is actually happening is I think you're seeing people that are choosing to leave Harriman.
Yeah.
Because they can't, there's nowhere to go.
There's nowhere to move up to either.
I can live in a townhouse, or I can live in a condo or aptly. Me and my wife have looked for a hatmaker for five years.
Yeah.
And it gets down to, is that subdivision?
Yeah.
There's two choices.
Yeah, for sure. But I think, I think that we also have some good opportunity around, along Mountain View corridor. I think, I think that, I, I think that it should have always been as we push further, we, we, you're not going to have the same draw. But we do still have some viable options along Mountain View. And that's going to, when it, that connects to I-15, that will again, you know, gain more. Porter Rock was going to connect and all that stuff over there.
And we need the overlay zone for car dealerships, a little large chunk that we're hoping for.
Yeah.
I think that area is all perfect. What I'm, I'm actually talking about is Rose, Rose Crest Road, 5600 West. We have churches that have pretty much eaten the majority of the commercial lots that we had along there. We should just face the reality. And I think we'd all realize that next to Blackridge, we're not going to put that many business kind of things in the middle of a community of homes. I'm just saying, we, we may need to adjust the old historic commercial and try and refocus it down along the.
More viable transportation for our cars.
If we fail to achieve some economic development balance, then our taxes definitely have to go up.
Well, you've, you've been up in Rose Crest, and there's, it's, it's the multi-use. It's the, it's where they have, it's like four shops, I think, and then above it is the residents that live there. They've not suffered at all. They're doing actually very, very well. And so there is some, some areas where that can be implemented and work really well still for our community if we make it a focus in some of these smaller areas. Because, I mean, I know the owner of the Sherology and she's, they've done really, really well in that area.
So I think some good points have been made in Venge's sort of metrics or key indicators are likely things that, you know, on average, you know, what's a good target point for the city? And it could be that there's going to be a range because some areas are going to be more of the bedroom community or the residential areas that you're going to target commercial in certain areas. But figuring out, you know, what is that target range on average citywide? So that, you know, as an area comes in, it's not like, oh my gosh, we're doing too much over here. It's kind of keeping it in mind of what the, the range is on average for the city. So that it's keeping that, that big picture, that long, long range perspective in mind.
But what, sorry, but what do we currently have besides maybe the one little chunk of the Danzy property that's not already entitled in some sort of a development agreement? What, what do we have? It's annexed into the city. Nothing.
We don't have all that much opportunity, even if we wanted to go Hatmakers. To go Hatmakers. There's a lot already coming in areas that we don't, we don't see right now because it's a master development agreements and hasn't been built. SLRs is a great example.
Yeah, it's the same.
I mean, Teton and the, the two next to it, and Teton's going to be the largest lots, but the two next to them haven't been approved. They're high density. I mean, for a community, it's high density out here. And we have, we have so much traffic. I mean, we're going to double our growth, no problem, with all the stuff we have, I think. And that's not even including if we get other stuff to actually come into the city. So we're trying to plan effectively with keeping that in mind, and that's where we struggle a little bit.
Yeah.
Well, I think with our trail system, it's like, if we trade density for preservation, that's an important thing to look at. It's like, hey, we're going to accept density, well, what's our preservation plan for trails?
Yeah.
It's like, that's a big payoff for a lot of people.
That, to me, is worth the density.
Yeah.
If we're getting true.
If you get preservation.
Preservation.
It's a trade-off.
That's why we should.
And you're, you're talking about open space preservation, is that right?
Yeah, actually, we have other high schools that come with their high school mountain biking teams.
Times, yeah, it's great.
Is that more of a social, cultural?
Yeah, probably.
Should we move on to social?
In my opinion, one of the key metrics that I will be looking for is, is the opportunity for job creation, job growth very specifically. I don't care if it's commercial, I don't care if it's office space, because office space inevitably leads to commercial and everything else that comes with it. And so I just, one of the biggest complaints that we hear, could, you know, some of the biggest complaints that we hear could be mitigated by having more jobs here in the city, you know? Trying to commute back and forth, trying to, you know, have to go somewhere else to go to a restaurant, all those things. If we have, yeah, if we have more jobs here, those services would locate here because the daytime traffic is here. Therefore, so making sure that as we look at this, we're preserving areas such, such as Light Industrial Park or something along those lines. Doesn't necessarily have to be straight retail, but, you know, but job creation is what I think most were concerned.
Yeah.
I have a question about, what percentage do you know of your residents on the U.S.?
Say how many of you guys?
We don't, we don't have any jobs located here other than people.
Except for RIN.
Yeah. We don't have any jobs.
And we have, we have Smiths, we have Walmart, we, you know.
Yeah, Smiths, Walmart.
Some good structures.
Grocery stores.
And some fast food.
What did you say? 60% of people on the U.S. outside?
I think.
Oh, so higher than that.
I think you're in the 78 age range.
Yeah, 80%.
And what, what percentage, I mean, how big on the issue of concerns for your residents is traffic?
I think that is, I honestly.
That's key.
When you see the.
I think if we can make it easier for people to get here, to get home, I know that's a huge issue. And I know a lot of it's through River Tinsel. You all know exactly what I'm talking about, the Bangor 134 issue.
Is that a problem?
Yeah, majority.
So the matter of, the matter of example, my point is, those are major issues you probably hear about all the time. It's governing my community or when I come back into my community, I'm almost in the traffic. And a lot of those are mitigated with jobs in the community. And those jobs do, it's retailers now, which is much different than 10 years ago. They're looking at specifically daytime populations. They used to do was always population densities, the incomes and transportation, or access to a number of car trips. And now those are important, but it's almost as important to have daytime population. So they're looking at proximity to employers or business partners, things like that. So that, that should, should be measured as part of your residents, your jobs, or proximity to a workplace.
Sure, I don't disagree with that either, but part of the problem is, is where are you going to put it? And, and who's going to locate there, right? It has to be unique because if you're going to put it way out, then you, then it becomes unique to a company that would actually could be, still be viable for a job source, job center clear out away from a major corridor. Because you're not only going to get Harriman residents to work there, you're going to have to have also people coming this way, right? And so you have to have it to where people will actually come so that the business stays viable.
And the Bonneville study that they showed in December might be a good one for you guys to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done.
That, that has some, it has some crazy infrastructure problems that could arise.
So, yes, we've seen that study and you can.
We just, we want to try to be proactive and figure out potential solutions.
There's some, there's some fundamental, just, what's the word, calculations in there that are, that have, that, that data is incorrect. So I think it'd be worth looking at a couple more of those points. Simple things like 15 acres is required of park space per thousand residents. And then right now you're at seven, and you're hoping to get to nine. So 15 per thousand, that's why the Olympia Hills, that needs 500 acres of park space. So that would be 400 acres for all the homes, which would be 22 minutes per acre. The, the study is, is flawed, just, just in the point that we shouldn't look at and think, boy, are these infrastructure numbers are, are, they're tried and true. They, they need to be looked at and scrutinized and recognized that there needs to be a counterbalance there. Run, you know, run those numbers by, you guys have some of the best economic development staff in the state. So I run those by them to make sure that you're giving the right numbers on that.
I bet you say that to all the states.
I know, I, my.
Is that what the balloon over there is?
He's a magician.
Great. Do we want to move on to the social, cultural? And what are some characteristics that you feel you have now?
I feel like we have a pretty lively orchestra.
This is the first meeting that's been.
A company. Or a company with background music.
Sad effect. I know the Harriman RS Council General PD was present here, has been active in the community for a while. And so they do have, they do have a half dozen different things they do throughout the year, a couple different things from a social, cultural type aspect, I guess.
I think Craig Park is meant to be a social aspect of our community. And the reason it was designed that way was to be a, you know, a community, an opportunity for the community to congregate here.
Probably Butterfield Park as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that has the Enduro, the Rodeo, the Corn billion there with the. Yeah, which, I think those are the three big ones here.
Sure, and I put, plus I have a ton of, we do, do the movies at the park there.
Oh, yeah.
Do tons of.
They do the play every year up there as well.
You mentioned the, the mountain biking and the, the trails, which are sort of that, that active outdoor recreation.
Same park. Did you put ours out at the top one after?
I think the walkability in certain areas, it's not everywhere, but I know if you go around Rose Creek, there's always hundreds of people walking through the area.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, it just depends on the subdivision.
Yeah, the paths, the, the path connectivity for theirs.
Connectivity. I know a lot of us love that piece.
And that, that's lacking on the north side a little bit.
Right. And I think that's a, a great point as far as the, the connectivity and the metrics for that. Because that's something that, you know, as master development plans start to build, it's like, okay, are we meeting our connectivity goals and making sure that, that there is that walkability that's built as the, those areas fill in and making sure that those things are, are priorities for bringing those.
Especially when they're not master planned.
Yeah.
Control that.
Right.
That's what there's troubles.
Which is why some of the north area was difficult for a while. It's because there were little subdivisions that were, they.
The Midas Creek will eventually have the path there that'll connect you a little bit, but it's not, it's not there yet.
Yeah, same in our area. There's no path, nothing like that.
Yeah, it would be nice to have like a master walkability plan, something like that where it's like, okay, we're going to do a cul-de-sac. We've already planned that we have some connectivity through it for people to get to the subdivision.
I think we have good events already, but I'd love to see more, like maybe a harvest market and maybe some like outside concerts, like do the artist from, not just within this, but things like that.
We do, it's the fire station.
Yeah.
Yeah, we actually have our community gardens, which is, into, into the farmer's preference.
I, I think you have one that, the, the, we talked about it earlier, with the reservoirs. I know the Coke Pond and.
And Blackridge.
And the Blackridge. Blackridge, I think we need to not entice so many other communities to come to it. So I think we should entice the city people to come to it. There's actually, because I know like half my neighborhood will go to it because it's overrun.
Springville, Springville actually has remedied this over the last year or two really, really well. So they give one parking permit per household for a Springville residence, and then they charge everyone else. And it's taken care of everything. It solves a lot of challenges of going and visiting.
But, but it is, I mean, it's, it spreads like wild. The splash parks, those things have spread really well. And a lot of people talk about it.
It's so weird when this stops coming.
So we, I think we do a phenomenal job thanks to Wendy and on, when we plan events. And the, we do a ton of things.
Oh, we're incredible, yeah, for sure.
But when, when we don't have an event, I'm guessing that probably the two most successful places where people gather is Blackridge and Townsend. Any, is there any other place kind of like?
The splash parks.
Splash parks a little bit. But we also like, of course, but it's not from a city that stands.
Yeah, but that's more a type to the van, more, more casual. Like, for example, think about where would you go to meet somebody, just gather and hang out here in Harriman? There's almost no place that's there.
Walgreens.
Yeah.
Smiths, we're talking about that.
Majority people.
I spend a lot of time thinking about how much, I mean, we're, we're, we're really unique in that you can see steeples all across our city. And we all know it's all one thing. If you live in our community and you're not part of that, that network, what is your social and cultural life like here? I've, I've worried about that many times, like, if you're not connected with that network, what is your quality of life like here? Can we compensate for that? Can we create gathering places? Can we create more black bridges and towns?
Well, I, I think that goes back to, um, I mean, the forty acre park that we're going to have in there, I think that will be home sort of that. And it's closer to down here, closer to Mountview, closer to one eighteen, closer to some of the more traffic corridors, which should help with that actually being used more so. But that also means, how do we effectively plan for what the needs will be there?
And, and obviously, and I shouldn't have overlooked this, because we've already said it, the trails are a significant.
As you said, that's where, I know a lot.
That, that is where it needs growing.
Tons of people use.
Yeah, I mean, I pass half my neighborhood on a walk all the time, so.
So, recreation.
But when, when you talk about the vision of Harriman, to be honest, for me, I look at it as it's a re- recreational center. Whether it's, I go to a sporting event, which now we all provides, and the rugby up there, or I go ice skating at the Ribbon, or I go hiking, or I go biking, or. I mean, to me, that's, that's why my mind always goes to bedroom community, which we're trying not to make it that, which, which just sort of blows my mind sometimes, because it feels like that's what it should be.
And the other two I think you really have on here, even though they're not in the city, is, and Butterfield Canyon's not as much, because it's a little more restricted, but Rose Canyon.
Rose Canyon's.
Everybody that's not in our community thinks that Rose Canyon is in Harriman.
Yeah, sure.
It is a, it's a identified location.
And I don't necessarily think it's not trying to avoid saying bedroom community, I think it's just simply that we have to figure out a way to pay for the bedroom community, and raising taxes is not an option. We can't raise our property taxes high enough to make a difference.
But there's nothing wrong in strengthening the place where we live.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Nothing wrong in strengthening our neighborhoods, our residential.
Agree a hundred percent, I'd love that, that part of it, that feel of it, it's just trying to figure out how to, again, pay for, to live there. Because our roads will get really bad if we don't figure out how to do some taxes.
Around the regional roads, which is not.
That's why we have to make it viable, because. That's why we do not.
Outside those corners, it's going to be a problem.
Yeah.
I was going to say about the grand parks, but my house, we have tons of neighborhood stuff, gatherings that happen there, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the little pocket parks in all of the neighborhoods. Even like, my subdivision's part of Rose Creek, but we're on the other side of one thirty-four, and they, they use the little pocket parks all the time to.
Yeah.
Do community for that area gatherings, so I think keeping that kind of feel across is what will keep the communities.
It's tough, you got to balance maintenance versus accessibility, and, and I think the parks plan is trying to address that, that we recognize that there, as I'm understanding, when we've got, through our recent growth, we've come up with a shortage in our parks development. Um, we're focusing more on quality over quantity, but we still want to achieve access and proximity, so we're working on that.
Here's, here's another weird one, um, sorry, I started off, um, not weird one, but several years ago, when we lived over on Friendship, um, we used to have an, well, an ecclesiastical thing that was really invested in emergency response. And so, everyone in our neighborhood had, like, captains, and it didn't have anything to do with, with a religious thing.
Right, right.
It was simply that, it was, it was, we were organized with that, right? And our, but when we moved, it's like that just didn't exist, and so I just wonder if, how focused are we on that anymore? Because that was another really good way to keep a community connected, because you knew all your neighbors, you knew how to help each other out, that kind of thing.
That was a good one, I remember when that push came through, it was, it was.
It was great to connect with, with neighbors, because everybody had to know, you know, even, even if you weren't cer- cert- certified, you, there was a neighborhood captain that would say, if there's an emergency report to this person, this person's going to go check on these people. And it really connected neighbors, no matter who, what, anything you were, it connected neighbors, because you, you had to know who your neighbors were.
And I think we should personally have recommended to create opportunities to, to foster that in our community, like, if we want to have, somebody wants to have a block party, remove the barriers to make that easy to do.
Or put a barriers.
Coastal barriers are right at the regular.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be a fireworks issue.
As an.
Yeah, I think maybe like a, a great corollary to remove barriers, um, if you've been to downtown Salt Lake City on Main Street, I think probably like ten or fifteen years ago, there wasn't that much sidewalk dining. And the permit, I think, to get sidewalk dining was like five hundred dollars for something, and it was just, it was just deep enough that smaller businesses weren't willing to pay. And so, one of the things, like, I can't remember because I'm getting too old, but it was either, you know, Rob Becker or Rocky, or someone's like, you know, let's, let's remove that barrier, let's make it twenty-five dollars. And so, you know, all of a sudden, like, all these businesses were like, yeah, like twenty-five dollars, like, I can do that, and sidewalk dining just started popping up all over the place. You know, which created the street life, which brought more excitement, and it just, it's a little thing that made a huge difference outside of just that direct, um, cost perspective. It's like, okay, the money that was lost in that permit change was gained just by creating this vibrant street life, and.
And that's how I sort of envisioned back here with the shops going along, is they're probably little smaller shops, sidewalk dining, different things like that, not as big, but, but more.
Experiential retail.
You mentioned the container park.
Yeah, the container park in Las Vegas is awesome, and it is packed all the time. It's, it's three stories of containers, and it's literally whole cargo containers, and it's just, each container is one shop, that's how it is. And it's got, they cut out where it's glass, along the whole front of it with a door, and, and it's got like a little coffee shop, a little, a little pop-up place, a couple little restaurant type things that are not, not as, uh, full kitchen stuff. I mean, it, it is awesome concept, but it's, it's really, those are the things that attract people as well. And, and my, my thought, or what I'm looking at with at least some of this, is we need to differentiate ourselves a little bit.
Yeah.
And, and some of those concepts are really good, but it takes us planning, saying, this is what we're looking at, we're not looking at anything over two thousand square feet, we're looking at shops under a thousand square feet, or whatever we decide. Um, and obviously, relying a lot of the staff with their research on what they think is doable, makes sense, and also outside resources that we have.
I think, I mean, retail is changing, you know, we all, we all see it, I think, focusing on more specific experiential retail. Yeah, I think that's, that's what many of you guys say a lot, seems like, so, I think you're definitely headed down the right, right track with that. Um, okay, anything?
We, we kind of heard some things about identity already, but I don't know if anybody wants to add to that.
On what? I didn't hear anything.
Identity.
Yeah, an image and identity, um, you've heard, yeah, just.
Yeah.
But anything else that we want to add in that thing, and also just thinking about those indicators or metrics? You know, what, what do you want to be, you know, from your image and identity that you're projecting to West of the Valley, uh, to future companies that might want to locate here? You know, what is, what makes Harriman a great place? What defines you?
And I don't know how to measure this necessarily, but we talked about it a little bit before, but how many residents stay, come out here and then stay and move up, you know? I think we need to find a way to keep residents here, I think we lack creating a community here, because so many people, like we said, they come in, they buy a townhome, and then they leave, so they don't ever feel a sense of community here, so it has a hard time. You know, I'm not preaching ever anti-identity, but there's, and I'm not preaching one acre lots either, but we need a balance to where they can, we can create communities where they can move up, and stay in this area and invest in this area.
It feels like we don't have the balance of the starter home to the next one.
The cradle to grave kind of.
It, it seems like, obviously, there's a lower amount of people that want the third acres plus, but, I mean, I grew up on a point two acre, and they're hard to find in Harriman. They're really hard to find, it's almost impossible now, unfortunately, if you want to build, they're all under that. They're, they're point blinds and things like that.
Well, like, in my community, everybody that moved where I live was from Harriman, almost everybody moved from the neighborhood over to this newer neighborhood, so, I think kind of depends where you come into Harriman. If you came into Harriman as a single family residence, those people want to stay in Harriman, maybe if you're in a townhome, just the jump, the jump is too big to stay.
It seems like the rentals are actually increasing, because we have the one right by Silver Rest, that they were all purchased, and now, uh, they were all purchased, and this was like a couple years ago, four or five years ago. And there's probably twenty percent of them that are rentals already, and the initial people that purchased made a rental left.
I also think, one thing that we noticed when we were first beginning as a city, you had the old town Harriman, then you had the new growth. With that, you had new fences, new, like, people maintained because it was so brand new, you couldn't have this dilapidated homes. I actually think we're starting to go into this phase that our community's been built long enough, and it's not so much for this, but I'm worried that we're not doing enough effort on making sure people maintain.
Code enforcement.
Code, code enforcement, I mean, I was just talking, just the subdivisions alone. I know, like, when you got put in Redwood Road, you couldn't cut for utility lines, ever, it wasn't even an option. But in our community, we build a brand new road, put a bunch of investment, and then we, okay, let's go ahead and cut the brand new road for the KFC. What I'm saying is, if we want to get money and revenue, that's where you should start. Penalizing those that are taking, not taking care of our community, rather than those that are supporting our community in a good way, so I really think that's something, and I don't know that it's so much here, but I think that's where the identity of Harriman started, was, was really clean, was new, was fresh. And people liked it with the trails and all the amenities, and it was worth the drive. And I worry that as the communities dip, like what happened to West Valley, if we, we don't watch it, it will go quick, and will be another kind of version like that in certain areas.
I, I suspect that most people who are coming from outside into Harriman, I think the community still feels new, fresh and clean. I, I realize in living here, you kind of, you know where the warts are.
But, but I'm saying, it's.
But I think in general, that is still a part of our image.
But what I've noticed with it is the starter home concept, is people are starting to jump to the next home, and the next people aren't necessarily keeping up with that, and that's, that's how West Valley happened. It was starter homes, you jumped in, and then you jump to South Jordan or Harriman to get out of West Valley. And, and that is my concern is with the starter homes, go drive through Hamilton Farms, you see some, you're starting to see that because of lack of code enforcement, it's going to create a glight that I don't know the community can come back from.
And that's also an increase in rentals that occur as well, to where when people move, they're making them become rentals in the higher density or multifamily units, which there's nothing to, I mean, I, I wish I could say every, people from, with a rental mindset, think I'm going to preserve it, I'm going to keep it nice, but that's not typically the case. Typically, I'm going to be here for a year, maybe two years, maybe three, but then I'm leaving, so they don't, they're not vested as much, we're not, there's not really as much protection.
And oddly, those are the figure of lots, to be honest, because those were old lots.
A challenge to an identity which is just being, make, well maintained from.
I mean, that's what, I mean, you ask any of the other cities that come out and tour facilities.
It's a clean community.
They talk about, when we hit Taylorville here, they talk about how well our parks are maintained and things like that. We need to ensure our residential areas are just as well maintained.
Yeah, like the old Fieldstone, that's where most of the people that moved into the new Fieldstone, moved, and you drive through there, and there's tons of houses with death lawns and.
And that, that's what I'm saying, is without watching that, I, I think that's where the community's ruled, that's where it tips every time. You look at any of, historically, you get, you get, you get it going, and then people want to upgrade, and I get it. And so, the next person wants to make a return on their investments, they split it into a rental, and it just degrades slowly. And that's what I'm worried about, is preserving that.
At least that I can see. We still maintain a community that has a lot of open space, even amongst some of these areas with density that, that occurs, we're trying to maintain that. And, and I mean, we all worry about it, and we never want to say it, we had a high suicide rate in our high school, and we fear it's overcrowding, and, and it might be other issues, there's a lot that we worry about, and we don't always know exactly why it is. Um, but, one of the things that, that caused at least me and some of the others to look at is how to preserve more of an open field than a crowded field. And some of that was preserving communities that have less paid area, which one of those answers is, when or if more density comes in, you require more underground parking, because then it has more of an open field. And so, so I, I think there's lots of things we need to start looking at and really planning out, and that might be the next phase, that's probably, probably a little premature for this one, but, but looking at how do we preserve that open field that allows our community to be less crowded? If, if, if this is coming, how do we make it less crowded?
Another thing on identity that our community is really well known for is usable den, usable open space. What we've noticed lately in the multifamily, is they hit the twenty percent, the number max, it works out, but if you go back to the other areas, you have usable open spaces, detention pond, soccer park, a, you know, a skate park on the side. I mean, you have a variety of open space functions in one park entity, where now in these, what I'm worried about with the new developments, is we got our little pocket parks, and that's, we got our, our couple amenities and our, our retention pond. And we hit the twenty percent, because we have mathematically lots of sidewalk to compensate for that open space and park strip, and, you know, you add up that much driveway space between each of it adds up.
We've been starting to push back on that issue.
But I think that's where our identity was formed, is it was usable open space, not just, wow, it's a huge amount, you can pack a lot in for what we actually had.
I think, I mean, that was the issue that you go out and was dealing with too, is like, and, like, are we asking for the right amount of open space and the right types of open space? And how to be a little bit more specific in your request, because we've been able to see, that's, like, you, you hit the, the mathematical number, but that's not that qualitative, um, metric that's important to maintain that, that identity.
Yeah, that last, that last density that DAI did, I know all of us were, yeah, hit it.
I'll show it to you.
We have, they hit it.
We have two between the driveways we're counting.
It just didn't, and because now you're going more large multifamily, and there's more walkability, technically is open space, but I think showing that is what would take the exact picture. Yeah, it's nice between driveways.
Yeah.
Like you just, like, flash mob, go into those open spaces?
That's where I kind of felt like, I was not clear if I made metrics or something, where if you had X amount of units, you're required to have so much open space. Just so we get those pocket parks or, you know, little parks in each community, because honestly, a lot of people gather around the park, it's a subdivision.
Yeah, just different thresholds for different number of units.
So, if you have two hundred units, you have to have a park with these types of amenities, and they can choose.
And they have to put it in.
Yeah, and they have to put it in as part of their.
That just kills them.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so I think the, the last category that we're going to talk about.
Was design.
It's design, the built environment that are reform, yeah, some of that is a little bit.
Yeah, and we probably will follow this up, the, uh, our consultant is working with Wendy, recently did an image kind of preference survey, and I think we could probably do something like that on this topic with, with this group and, and our steering committee and the community at large. But I, I know since I've been here, one thing I've been hearing is, we'd like to see if there's a way that we could entice larger lock development. We, we, we really don't have that much, to be honest, we've had a pretty dense, uh, development pattern, and, um. We've had a pretty dense, uh, development pattern. And, um, I I know that the, um, kind of the more expensive, uh, housing development is difficult right now. It's it's moving slower in the marketplace. We do have a couple of larger subdivisions that have been kind of just not developing right, pretty brim. Some that have been platted but haven't really built out. So we want more, but it also doesn't seem like the marketplace is bringing it. I don't know.
I personally have, I have a take on that. I think that I I personally regret a little bit is I think we've built our minimum standard square footage home, so we 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 increased that really high. And then we also want big lots. So I think if you think about it, to buy the land and to buy a big home on that land has put it into a price market that you can't do both. So you're more willing to go to a big home on a small lot. I I actually regret sometimes that we've made the minimum lot, you know, we went lots of stone, we made, we we made it big and nice.
Put a lot of it on the single family.
But we did it on the single family. I actually wish we would have went way harder on the multifamily, made it so deluxe that it kind of enticed it the other direction. Because what what I've act- what I think is happening, and and I've done this by going and actually looking at it, you start to get into the seven fifty, eight hundred thousand dollar range on a half acre like that. And that's with base model.
Not even half acre anymore.
And 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 that's what I'm saying with the land value and these large homes, I think that's where you're starting to get where you're pricing people. They want the more land, they just can't do both.
So why are, so why are we requiring them to do both? Just because everyone in the neighborhood expects the houses to all look the same?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Recently, I would say like a year ago, we went through the residential standards and beefed them up because we thought it would be a good thing.
Right.
But I actually think that that home value price is so high that you can't, it's it only goes to a few niche people from an income perspective.
But for a vendor or investor, and I don't know, Benj, if you have any experience on this, aren't you looking for a certain ratio of value of for the home versus the raw costs of the ground? Aren't they, so if if the cost of the ground is this high and you build a smaller home, isn't that a little bit harder to finance? Is that?
Sure, usually the rule of thumb is about twenty percent, so.
The cost of the land is twenty percent of the essentially the mortgage.
It depends obviously on density and the size of the lot, but like, Dave, right, check if you push in some places at eighteen percent.
I guess just in general, my 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 point was, maybe we could look at, is there something we're doing that that's making it difficult to develop some larger lots in the city?
Well, I think it is, I think it's the houses, housing, because like I said, the the Freeman subdivision is going in. I went and looked in Richmond's home. They haven't got their pricing put together, but you're you're on the magnitude on the half acres, you're on the magnitude of almost eight hundred without without blinking.
Cause we have quarter acres.
Same with ours.
Cause you have bigger houses, bigger, and so the criteria gets so hard that I don't, I think people might want a bigger yard and not so much of a house or vice versa, but I think we've disabled them from having that option.
And I don't know if that's necessarily the case, but I've noticed that when you tend to get a larger lot, you tend to put a bigger house and you tend to put a little more expensive, because Riverton, I was looking at two different areas and they're selling third acres, just a lot worth two hundred. And then on top of that, they're putting a big house. And then, um, I just saw new development down at Riverton that was six fifty to seven fifty for the third acres.
Same at Richmond America by us.
Yeah.
Starting in four hundreds.
It's just.
Yeah, and that one, the one right next to me, it'd be quite the six start.
Yes, they move a little bit slower, but but that's just because they move a little bit slower.
But it's a good element to having a community because, again, that allows a home for people to move up to. There are people that, that's their next step up.
I actually wonder if our our lack of inventory is more along the lines of point two to point two-five. I wonder if our lack of inventory is there, not the point three pluses, not the under point two. It's the it's the fifth to quarter acres. I think that's our lack of inventory, to be honest.
Quarter acre. The quarter acre plus minus.
It's the, it's the fifth to quarter acres. I think that's our lack of inventory, to be honest. I think we have some areas that that have the third acre pluses. And they're gonna sell. It just might take a little longer, but we have a huge flux of under, under point two.
I think you're right. I think it's, I think, I really think it's the range of the fifth, quarter, thirds, at that range is where we're.
That's why.
I don't think.
Basically, we'll have definitive inserts in that card. Benj's group pulls out their their housing numbers.
But that's up by up.
Sometimes it is surprising. It's like you think.
There's, there's still.
Yeah, we're actually, we just want to luxury housing, so that's, we've got to come forward, but we don't have the inventory, so.
So I I am gonna voice that it is eight o'clock. We did say we were gonna go till eight o'clock. Um, I'm gonna, obviously, um, unless we wanna continue on.
Yeah, I think that was a great amount of information and discussion.
I think that is. Yeah. I I told Susie that you would not be shy and and you fulfilled my promise, so.
Yeah.
Maybe we can wrap up with, it looked like Brody had a remark, but if anybody else has wanted to last remark, just wrap up with that and then, you know.
It's more of a question with the design piece. What I would like to see is the master trail just overlay of our city and then the twenty fifty transportation overlay, see how those can connect to one another.
And I'm gonna, I'm not gonna be at the next Parks Committee meeting, so maybe I'll go be there for me because I'll be off.
When is it?
Um, it's this week. Okay. So I might be there.
I've got last minute. Uh, one that I think we've done a fairly decent job at, but we can do more is tree-lined streets, just having trees.
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
It makes a big difference.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You can have that kind of tree city.
Yeah. Yeah. So so is that more along the development agreements and standards of ordinance as things like that?
Well, uh, obviously, we still control the right of way. And so even if we've had a an oversight or a failure to get, uh, street trees, we can, we can go back.
Is that a code enforcement thing too? Cause I was required to put in a couple of street lanes, right?
Yeah, it can be.
It's a code enforcement issue, to be honest. A lot of this, I think it's there, it's just having a, it's truly tightening up.
Trees were required in the Parks Strip, so.
But we can always have a program to go back and.
Yeah, they're required.
It's a great Arbor Day program.
I love that stuff.
Well, I'll ask if there's any last remarks and then I'll request a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Sorry.
All the favor.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.